Okay, I would like to call the June twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Wall City Council meeting to order. And I would like to ask our Finance Officer of the Year, Carolyn Anderson, to call a roll call for us, please.
Welsh?
Here.
Morgan?
Here.
Stan Anderson?
Here.
Houston?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Off?
Here.
Mike Anderson?
Here.
We do have a form.
Okay, let's stand and say the question of allegiance. Kelly, will please leave.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have order of business for emergencies?
We do not.
And do we have attendance on Zoom?
Not currently, but we will later in the meeting when the auditor zooms.
Okay, with that being said, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So.
Second?
Second.
Dan seconded, Kelly, okay, okay, perfect. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is anyone have a conflict of interest after reviewing the agenda? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the June fifth meeting, the budget reports, sales tax reports, cash and money market balances, city of wall fire department, library and cemetery claims?
Absolutely. Sorry, that will be a different line item, and I will explain why in a minute.
Okay.
That will have to take a separate motion.
Okay, so we have minutes, budget report, sales tax and cash and money market.
Correct.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion.
There's a second?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, now, city of wall, fire department, library and cemetery claims, Carolyn?
Yes.
What did you want to visit with this file?
Well, I was going to explain later in my report, when I was attending the finance officer's training, it was explained to us that that cannot be in the consent agenda, it has to be a separate line item for approval, so.
Okay.
A lot of us were doing it incorrectly, but we're doing it right now.
Okay, so we're changing our format?
Yes.
On the agenda, however, you all have copies of the city claims, fire department, library and cemetery, and there's nothing different about those?
No.
It's all good.
Just a separate motion for it.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve those claims?
Motion.
Mike's moved, Kelly has seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. So that brings us to item number ten, Mr. Hartman in Echo Valley, would you like to join us?
Yes, thank you, it's been a great night. So a couple of things, and I guess just a project update, start with the under construction Echo Valley subdivision project, and I think the first agenda item and actual action item for you on that is pay request number two, just to work through a couple of things on that. It is a little bit larger amount tonight, and I want to explain why. They obviously are still working on kind of that stone drive area and beginning to head towards the west of the sewer. However, within this pay estimate, the contractor did request that we pay for stored materials. All the stored materials are on site, being manholes, pipe fittings, tigers, all that good stuff. And it just helps them out a little bit to not carry that material load with them. So, within this cost estimate, there is an amount of work completed, but then a large percentage of it is the stored materials. So, basically they're all on site, it's stored there, and with this, this pay estimate or this pay app request, you will own the materials and hopefully put them in the ground.
Okay, so.
That's that one.
Okay, so, shall we deal with this then, right off? Does anyone have any questions of ten then regarding this pay request?
So it's essentially not for storage of it, it's for purchasing all of the material?
Correct. Yeah.
Which is on site?
Which is on site, correct. Yes.
So the total amount is three hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents. Do I have a motion to approve this change order number, request number two, for quality driven? Okay, Mike is moved.
Second.
Stan is seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay.
So then just a couple other things with that Echo Valley project, kind of an update on the project as a whole, and then one more request for tonight, too. They, like I said, they started the lift station, it worked out into Stone Drive, up Stone Drive with the sewer and the water taps. I actually have a little bit of sewer made heading towards the west as well. So, their kind of progression plan, they plan to finish up in Stone Drive and then continue with the sewer there as well. But with that, we were, we were tracking a potential need to change our patching, our street patch plan within Stone Drive. We had essentially planned to remove the entire width of the southbound lane, where that sewer was going in, just to allow for that patch. But with the kind of condition of the existing road and the way the trench went in and things like that, it's cause for a pretty jagged line in the asphalt, and looking at it, discussing with staff and the mayor, we're recommending extending that path and just doing a full width asphalt patch within the road there. It just creates a much more uniform surface, doesn't put a goofy seam in the tire track, creates a probably better long-term solution maintenance-wise and things like that. So we were tracking that, planning for that, however, once I was on site today and kind of got a little better idea of what their timing was, they're actually hoping to finish the removals on the street, and then they would put kind of a temporary gravel surface back down and open the street up. But with that, the increase in the asphalt removal quantities and asphalt patch would warrant a change order. We unfortunately don't have that change order tonight, but we thought it might be an option to kind of get a consent with council that if it's okay to do that, give the contractor the okay to keep moving forward, get that done, help get the street opened up, and then we just follow the next meeting with the actual change order. So, with that, there's a reason I like the computer, my, what I call them chicken scratches, but I did scribble up some notes here for you, so, kind of starting at the top, it's what planned quantity had called for, and essentially just increasing that removal and patch to the other lane as well, would add about twenty-six thousand, five hundred dollars to the contract amount. But the good news is, we still are anticipating and planning for that deduct to use some of the gravel material out of your airport, so. Still on track with our planned contract amounts, but like I said, I do think this gives you a better finished product to begin with, so. There's a lot of info there.
Well, when I stopped out there, I tried to check every day or two, and they had a lot of trouble with that ground, just breaking off. So, this idea to do a whole patch instead of a half of one, I think will, as you have said, will serve our city well for the long term, because we all know, we've lived here for a long time and our ground moves, and, and it certainly is proving that in that little spot that they're in right now. So, council, would you agree to give a consensus until he can get these dollar amounts more finalized? But would you give us a consensus for this approximate amount just for the value of being able to continue to move on and keep work on this, which will perhaps make that road open? Get the road open, or that street open sooner?
How far south would, would that patch be? Because it'd be both north and south lane, yeah?
Yeah, maybe the north and south lane, and the actual longitudinal distance would be the same. So it's, it's what's open now, it's like a hundred and eighty directly, it's just adding to it.
Okay, but no more, Mike?
No more.
Good question. Stan?
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay, any, any other thoughts? So, to get a consensus, do I need a motion for consensus, or we just?
Just a consensus.
Okay, so Kelly, are you agreeing that this would be good, Jerry? Stan is, oh, Rick, what are your thoughts?
I think it's a good idea.
Okay. Stan and Mike, okay, so I believe that we are saying that we are, we have a consensus.
Awesome. Good, so what you'll see is, I'll keep him moving forward, we'll get the change order back. They will, when I talked about with Chris today, the contractor was opening more of a gravel surface, and he'll sign it, things like that to go with it, and then they're just coordinating with the actual asphalt contractor to get an actual patch it. So they will either flag it or close it just temporarily to do any patch, but it was very fast, so that shouldn't be.
Very good.
Awesome, thank you. I'll just breeze through a couple of things real fast.
Okay.
Not much change, I guess, to a few of these other projects from our last meeting. Industrial Park Development contractor was back on site this week. Both of the punch list items have been addressed, with the main thing still being that infiltration issue that we're addressing, and I just talked with the contractor again today, and he's tracking it and making a plan to continue those repairs, so. Working on that. Fourth Avenue Reconstruction, we do have a preliminary plan set ready, and I have some meeting dates put together, too, and I'll give you a schedule to get into the setup. I worked with the staff and a few of your folks through that. Twenty twenty-one street improvements, that pesky project goes out, that seems to be a challenge. We're still tracking it, had really good feedback from Three Suns on Rapid going into the spring to come hopeless with that, and then not getting much feedback now. So, I guess my ask there is, I think there was a comment at the last meeting that there might have been another company that somebody said they have spoke with. You guys hear of anybody, if I can help coordinate, let me know, if not, I'll start making some other calls to.
Okay, so Garrett, you've got some ideas on that, okay?
That's all I have for tonight. Any questions for me?
All right, good job, thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
And thank you for the weekly construction field reports, also that you sent, that's very interesting and excellent to have that information. Okay, moving forward then, we do have an airport project pay request also. Pay request number three to Western Contractors, and that document is also in front of you from Meaden Hunt. The amount for this is eight hundred and three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars, fourteen cents. Now Carolyn, correct me or remind me, we, we do in fact pay this and then you get reimbursement? Is that correct?
Except I don't.
Yeah, it's forty thousand, forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and three.
Forty-eight thousand.
Forty-eight thousand, eight, forty-two, seventy-eight.
It's not eight hundred?
No, that's the one previously.
Yeah. It's the bottom line, this is about doing this estimate. Forty-eight, but then.
Oh, I see where that number is now.
And just as an update, we have received that six hundred and sixty-one thousand that we paid a couple meetings ago. So, the turnaround, yeah, so the turnaround was pretty good.
So the eight hundred thousand would be the total in the end, and we just need forty-eight thousand right now? Correct? Okay. Any other questions or comments for this pay request, number three? Okay, do I have a motion then for pay request number three to Western Contractors?
Been moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any more comments?
Abstaining.
Oh, correct. Jerry is abstaining. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, so then. We've done project update, correct, Carolyn?
Yes.
Okay, so that brings us to item number eleven, Mr. Welsh, who has approached us before, if I understand correctly, you're the education specialist at Badlands National?
Yes, I am, I was recently hired or upgraded this year, so I've been with the park since two thousand twelve, so they decided to keep me and keep moving me into more interesting positions. Thanks, thanks for having me on your agenda today.
Yes. What would you like to visit with us about? I know before you had indicated there's some significant fossils?
Yeah, so I work at the park, and on top of being an educated specialist, I'm a paleontologist, so I do a lot of research on the resources we have here. I'm also sought out by other people that are interested in this particular resource we have in the White River Badlands. Last summer, I had some Forest Service seasonal staff members tell me, oh, you need to check out this ground of public domain land outside of Wall, near where the shooting range is, just east of town. And they said it's full of fossils, I checked it out, sure enough, there's no shortage of fossils out there, but then I realized there's actually a pretty significant chunk of land that is municipal. So it's owned by the city of Wall, and I'm used to doing field trips with kids, and, you know, local kids here at Wall or Kadoka, the Wall After School Program and things like that. And when I leave field trips in the park, you know, we do these natural resource exploration hikes, so we go out to the geologic resources, the fossil resources, but it is a fair to collect anything. And, and so we need special permitting, we need repositories and all this stuff. So this land that's just east of here, next to the shooting range, I think has an interesting opportunity where I could use the area as an outdoor classroom for similar hikes, but if there's students that want to learn how fieldwork works, we can do that with those school children. So things like field mapping, prospecting, field jacketing, excavation, and how professionals do that in the field, we could do that without a lot of hassle and permits, because as far as I know, there are no municipal rules or regulations on collecting fossil resources. So, and I know the area is used pretty frequently by people using four-wheelers and, and motorcycles. I've already collected a couple of things already that I think were at risk of being destroyed, and I'm holding them now, but as far as I'm concerned, it belongs to the city of Wall. So, if we can find a permanent landing space for that, and this is just, I'm introducing this as a preliminary prospect, I'd like to work with Wall School at some point, I noticed Pandy Pittman is here, so hopefully I can check with her at some time after this. If, if the school is willing to work with us or work with me and maybe getting a collection made, and those things can stay in the public domain, so school kids can, you know, have their work on display and be kind of proud of that stuff. So, that's, that's my ideal situation. And I'm willing to explore alternatives to how that stuff can be stored or displayed. The park, some members of the park in the Resource Management Division are interested in providing other opportunities outside of the field where those fossils can get prepared and conserve or study and display. And if there's any potential opportunity, say for, for older schools, school kids, like high schoolers that are interested in maybe being involved in some research, if that opportunity provides itself, I'm happy to mentor that as well. So, I'm just throwing some ideas out there, this is all right now, so I just wanted to bring this to everyone's attention that I'm keeping my eye closely on this spot. I've actually gone out with Garrett here, and we've done some, just to survey the area we're talking about, and he's already found a fossil horse that's probably worth collecting, and a few other things, so. Does anyone have any questions for me?
So what do you need from us as a state council? Would you like to bring us a proposal that kind of says, okay, this is what I'm gonna do and where I'm going, or?
Yeah, and I can give you that proposal and provide that. I was mainly here for feedback on that, on what the city of Wall would prefer me to do about this. Because we, you know, again, I can collect stuff, I need to figure out a landing space for this stuff to live for the rest of its existence, and a few other things.
So would it have any effect on the shooting range or the use of the shooting range itself?
No.
Or the four-wheeling of it?
No.
Does it need to be fenced off?
Nope.
Would you need to, if you have students out there near the shooting range, would you need to close the shooting range just during the time that they're there?
Yeah, we would probably avoid doing any activity in some of that area where we're shooting at the current, but.
Well, you would just need to make an arrangement to, because where are they shooting, shooting range? Three hours, six hours, whatever it is.
Yeah, and that will probably be a case-by-case basis, because we don't have anything skeptical yet.
Sure.
So.
And then you would work with the Wall Schools and, and develop some opportunities with them, is that true?
And potentially opportunities out in park for students that maybe want to work on this stuff between, I mean, after, after collection in the field.
So take it from, from out there to the park and prepare it.
Yeah, that's a possibility, or we can find a way to work with our preparer on something set up, because I don't know if the classroom facilities or what the science classrooms like at Wall, if there's a way we can help them do some of that work there at the school. But, again, that's, that's another discussion outside of here.
I think it's a great opportunity for everyone. He's used to working with people where you have to have so many different permits and everything, so he's just, I think,
So, yeah.
Pretty much just permission to do it, and then, like I said.
And I've already talked to the BLM about that, and, and it's like they're open to the idea of doing the same thing with their ground. It's just anything we collect there has to be on permit and has to be at or approved federal repository, which closest to us is South of those school lines.
Yeah.
So I'm waiting to hear about a repository agreement for that, so. That's, that's not necessarily for, for our discussion here with, with Wall, but I would add, like, how Wall is involved if we proceed on working on BLM ground.
So it sounds like you're asking for a consensus to move ahead, to put a proposal together, so we kind of know what your game plan is and.
Yeah.
And give your, give our approval because we own the land.
Yes.
Okay?
Are you sure you wouldn't want to put up some sort of temporary fence while you're working, or do you do some of the stuff that's higher surface?
And I, I think that would be easy to do if, if we decide to work in the area where, where the shooting range is, if we're there during the day or maybe after school, if there's a way we could just rope that area off temporarily while we, while we do fieldwork. And, and if that's okay, we, we can do that, we just have to figure out. And, and I don't want to make the plan on my own, I'd like to work with you in figuring out what the best way to handle that could be.
Yeah, because I would just hate to see you guys going through all that work of extracting it carefully, and then there's nothing up and somebody goes over it with a quad or something and tears up a bunch of your work, you know?
Yeah.
Because it's kind of, it's not super visual from the road, correct?
No, it's not visual from the road, unless you're like physically walking and looking for it, you're really not gonna, you're not gonna notice it. So, I think a fence might bring more attention to it if you're working in an area.
Yeah.
But.
Because we do that in the park, we try not to flag off an area, because we, if we don't want to draw attention to it. Because I think with the stuff I have seen there, the condition of some of those fossils are too nice, I'm amazed nobody has noticed them before, we've already collected them. So it was, it was pretty shocking, we went out for five minutes and found four really nice skulls all close to each other without any real disturbance. So, went back out another day and then I noticed one of those skulls was missing, so somebody came in and took that, so I collected two others just to keep them safe.
So, you said a horse?
Little old horse.
Oh, yeah. Because, no, I'm wondering how much you're gonna find and where the city's gonna put it to display.
If, if we can get it that far, yeah, that would, that'd be good to figure out. Or, or a safe storage, so, you know, school kids can have access to it for, you know, science lessons, et cetera. Again, yeah, opening around the possibility here.
Okay, so, do we have a consensus then for him to move forward, bring us back a plan and work with Garrett? Is that kind of what I've heard then? Okay, so it's okay with you, Mike?
Yeah.
Dan?
Yes.
Yes, 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 okay.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work, for bringing that very intentionally. Okay, so Dr. Pittman, yes, you are in the room, so.
Yeah.
Greetings.
Well, good evening, very beautiful June, month of June here, and I'm glad to be back. What's going on at this school? We are currently, we have interviewed a couple of candidates for our business technology position, and we have another applicant to interview, but we are certainly still taking applicants on that position, we haven't made a decision. We're also currently looking for a new position that's been put together, it's for three hours of being a study hall monitor, and five hours as a kitchen assistant, that's a full-time position, nine-month contract with benefits. Love to have a great candidate for that. We're also gearing up and starting to look for substitute teachers this upcoming year, so if any of you are interested, please fill out an application, it'd be a great opportunity. Coaching positions we have open, we have gymnastics, both Head and JV, we have assistant wrestling and assistant cross-country coach right now. We have fortunately been filling all the other positions well. As far as our updates at our school building, we just got done refinishing the gym floor and the gymnasium and the beautiful eagle in the middle of it, and some repainting. So it's worth coming to see it this fall when the volleyball bridge is out, so. Really, we had some wonderful fumes for a while, but it's clearing out and we're feeling much better. As far as our CTE complex goes, hopefully at the July board meeting, we will see a presentation on what's to come, and at the, as the end of July approaches, possibly see the ground breaking to start that project. So we're looking forward to that. Again, congratulations to Carolyn Anderson for Business Manager of the Year, we're happy to have her on our school board as well. Her knowledge is very beneficial to all of us up there, too. And Carolyn and I will be leaving, we had Colorado Springs this week on Thursday afternoon to attend the PLSA meeting, which is our Impact Aid for federal land. And so, we, we went to that meeting in February, a very exciting group of people to work with, so I look forward to going to Colorado Springs later this week. Our end-of-the-year school board meeting is on June twenty-eighth at five-thirty, so we can finish out this school year, flavor or not, and July first will start second, or the next year, so. Any questions about what's going on in the school? Fossil opportunities, sounds great, I know one of the science teacher there. We're up to get and head to the park a lot, so I'm looking forward to hearing what happens comes.
Very good.
Thank you, and have a great evening.
All right.
Thank you, Randy.
Okay, so then that brings us to item thirteen, which is our auditor.
I have him up. Can you hear us, Keith?
I can, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Technology's great when it finally works, isn't it?
Exactly, and right on time, we're, we're in the item that you are here for, so.
And you want it quick, so I'll give it to you quick. Just as a reminder, this is the, our audit from December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-one, and so we're looking at, well, nearly a year and a half ago. In going through, I'm gonna hit some very quick highlights, but ultimately, you hire us to render an opinion on the financial statements, and we did, I don't know if you have a copy of the audit, but you can go ahead and follow through if you want, but in our independent auditors' report, the first thing we have is our opinion, and our, and in this second paragraph of that opinion, we And our and in this second paragraph of that opinion, we do state that the um. The financial statements uh present fairly in all material respects. The modified basis uh financial position of of uh the city of Wall. A- and again, uh just a matter of emphasis on this. Is that uh they are presented in on a modified cash basis, not which is different from uh. Uh generally accepted accounting principles in in the U S. Um. As far as the years, the year ended, um. Governmental activities, that's your general funding and your uh library, et cetera. Uh, and it did just under four million in in a cash position. Your business type activities, water, sewer and and garbage uh ended up right around one point three million uh in cash. Uh overall, uh. Governmental activities, again, that's your general fund, et cetera, uh. Increase nearly in an increase in net position of nearly nine hundred thousand. Um, again, big portion of that, remember back when the county provided funds for the industrial park. Um, as far as the um proprietary funds, your business type activities, water. Uh sewer and and garbage up. Pretty typical of uh years for them overall for the three funds, it showed an increase of a hundred and. Uh twenty to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I don't think any of these numbers surprise you, they fall pretty much in line with what Carolyn has been reporting. That was reporting to you during the year. Um, other items, I really don't think there's anything um that stands out. Um. Other than uh again, typical for your budgetary process, you do have transfers from the general fund to uh assist with the ongoing. Um. Operations of the library fund, fire department and and of course the cemetery fund. As is typical. Um, we also did in. We did conduct the audit. So under government governmental auditing standards, which are a little more strict than regular A I C P A uh audit standards. Uh look more closely. We had our our background as far as continuing education. Uh, look at our independence from you people, in other words, that we are not doing a lot of the work for you. Uh, is the main concern there. Uh, we do have uh repeat findings relating to um segregation of duties, which is difficult. Uh, in an organization your your size, I do know you are continuing to uh. To work to uh get people trained in all areas, that will assist in that. And also um. The assistance we uh provide for the preparation of financial statements. Um, is, but we are citing that again as a as a finding as well, otherwise um. Working, working remotely again, uh. Was. Well, it was actually productive, I mean, we got things done um i- in a reasonably timely basis. Um, and hopefully, uh we're starting to get back out on the road more and hopefully it can come by and uh actually be on site. Uh, this coming year. Any questions, I know it's this is. Looking way back in the past, but is there anything anything you need to discuss or need me to discuss further?
Anyone have any questions?
Well, I have a. What's the process now for the twenty twenty two with us? About shortly here.
Are you able to get Gary to keep?
I I I just turned my volume up, could you repeat, please?
Uh, well, I'm just curious as when the twenty twenty two audit would. Um. When that would start and and completed.
We're looking at scheduling and and getting information and during the summer and then getting it to and. And working on it throughout the summer and hopefully have it to you. Um, our internal goal is by September.
Any other questions? Do we need to approve or accept or?
Yes, accept the twenty twenty.
But I have a.
I would make a motion to uh. Approve and accept the. Twenty twenty one audit. This going.
Yes, okay, is there a second to that motion to accept and approve the twenty twenty one?
Second.
Rick has seconded, any other comments or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You're back there, so I appreciate your time here tonight with us.
No problem, we'll talk again.
Okay, thanks, Keith.
Okay, that moves us into the public comments, we can all part of our agenda where. People, members of the public can express concerns. Um, that are not on the agenda, action will not be taken, and each person is given a three-minute. Time limit, do we have anyone this evening that would like to make a public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item number fifteen. And uh the first uh item there is a building permit request. Uh by Randall Post to add on to his house at seven oh five North Street, that. Application is in front of you and the uh drawing is on the back. Garrett, have you reviewed this at all or?
Yep, it's. Part of it was already done, but he just enclosed a little area in between the garage and the. Existing part of the house.
Okay.
So it just consisted of putting one wall with a dark, what's that?
One wall with a dark.
Yeah, and this.
Okay. Any other questions?
Move to approve.
Okay, Dan has moved to approve the building permit. Uh for Randall Post at seven oh five North Street, do I have a second? Okay, Kelly has seconded, any other questions or concerns? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. The next side um building permit that's in front of us is Dave and Judy Curtis to construct a fence. This was brought before us at the last meeting, we needed to get more information. And so Garrett, did you?
Yep, I'm over to talk to Dave. And uh. Just to go back before. There was like seven foot evergreen trees where this fence is gonna go and and there's still a big cedar tree left there, so he's just gonna build that. A thirty-foot fence, that'll be a ways back from the sidewalk.
Okay, I think his drawing shows ten feet back from the sidewalk, is that right, where you will start the fence? Is that what it means?
Yep, and he does currently have a wooden fence. Yeah, he's got a cover from from the house down.
Yeah, and probably six foot, but this.
This would be five.
This is only five feet.
Yep.
And when I talked to, I talked to him today and. He says, and turns turning out to be a little more work than he thought, so he might even go back more than ten feet from the sidewalk.
Okay.
I don't know if he wanted me to help him or not, but I. Not help him.
Yeah, so where, you know, there was trees there before. I mean, it don't make it look nice, there won't be as much garbage around. For privacy for him.
Okay, so would I have a motion to approve the uh building permit for a fence? At Dave Curtis, Kelly has moved.
Second.
Jane, Jerry has seconded, any other questions or concerns? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, motion carries. All right, that brings us then to uh the Pennington County mitigation kickoff meeting update. Carolyn, are. Would you like to address that or?
Well, this is a mitigation plan that the county is doing and I think they're required to do every ten years, maybe. I didn't get a chance to look at the information, but they wanted to have all of the municipalities in Pennington County involved in it and. Kelly had volunteered to be our elected fifth girl from our municipality to attend. Um. Summertime makes it kind of hectic, so uh she was not able to attend and I was not able to get up to there either, but they did provide a um. Review of what that first meeting looked like and some other documentation that I included in your packet, so. That's your time, I don't know if you had a chance to review it, I like I said, I haven't had a chance, I don't know if they've set another date yet.
They haven't, this stuff. What was it, August twenty third has to be in?
Yeah, yeah.
But so I don't know if they're gonna have, if that's when the meeting's gonna be or or.
Okay.
Another one.
So I'm hoping to get through it and I might have something to bring back at the next meeting, um if they have some questions that need to be answered by all of you or something. I did notice several questions, but again, like I said, I haven't had a chance to.
They they have, um, if I'm reading it correctly, they want us to fill out. If we have plans for tornadoes, floods, earthquakes. And. Do we have that, I know we do, we have our. Um comprehensive plan, but.
Well, and I don't know, I mean, like, we do have the sirens, you know, for weather related, um.
Dustin wrote that packet down that time, and there were a couple of things, like shelter was one thing because the churches were no longer providing. Um. I think I still have that emergency prepared, yeah, like a like a disaster handle.
There's kind of like a chain of man as well.
Yeah.
So is this the packet that they want filled out by Officer Curtis? And who's gonna do that?
We get started now, Mary, it should be done.
It looks like you have it.
I think you have a two.
You know, I kind of go through that and if there are some things that I would have questions about, that would be something that I would plan to bring back to the July meeting. Because. Said Officer first, yeah, I mean, again, a meeting in July is just once. And so that would only give us then another meeting in August to get things finalized to get back to them, so.
So what is the real purpose of it?
Well, just like we have our comprehensive plan and we. Should have an emergency management plan, you know, type thing, all of this, and it's just county-wide and so. Planning of. What maybe needs to be done to some municipalities to help us with that, I don't know what they're going to do, I guess, either.
I think um because. Last time we met, uh R D was involved with that. And um. I think they just kind of want to look at some of that and update it because things do change. And kind of tweak what we got, so. Yeah, the most like the most important part would be that part two, the inventory assets. Or disaster load, number of residential structures, commercial structures, so they kind of have an idea. Okay, just the yes, no question, you know, like. He's identified that we have an aircraft accident, we have that, we have an airport, so yes. And go through it slow and figure it out.
Okay. So Kelly, would you like to assist Garrett and everyone? Working through this so that we get it back by their e- their deadline and you can represent, then you would know, so you can represent us in this group then and. Okay. So. Oh, Linda?
Um, is this document like the, not like the comprehensive plan, but the process to get the document finished, are there gonna be public? Events where the public can take a look at it and contribute?
Yes.
Okay. And those are county events or?
I'm guessing they will hold some of those meetings at. Within our municipal, I don't know if they're gonna do every. I know this is probably not gonna get finished until twenty twenty five. It's their deadline, so.
So this is just kind of the start?
Yeah, this is the very start of.
Okay. All right.
I thought I thought about it when I was kind of glancing through the finish.
So. In the pot of point they set out, Mr. Anderson, there is a whole list of benefits, so if you reviewed that, maybe you. Would answer your question, it promotes partnership building and focuses resource on the highest risk and. Increases awareness and identifies cost-effective action for risk reduction. And it's a community-driven living document. I just saw that, so maybe that's kind of where they're going with this, so. But, okay. Any other? Anything else anyone wants to? Um, is it about that, okay? Then we have a. Uh. A twenty-three, twenty-four package on sale, off sale malt beverage. Uh farm and wine for Red Rock.
And this is just a renewal, they were kind of contemplating whether they felt like they. Wanted to continue to utilize this license when all the others were approved and made and. They have decided to go ahead and renew it, so.
Move to approve.
Second. Yes, been moved in second and approved Red Rocks of malt beverage. Requests. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries, okay. That brings us to the mayor's report and at the last meeting, we did request that the street committee report and. So Stan or Rick, would you like to visit with us about, there was a concern that had been risen about the. Intersection, the four-way stop. And what were the committees report?
Well, I visited with Garrett this afternoon and. Uh, few of those items, he was in and talked to some of the people, so I might. Like let me. He shared what what he already found out, but I'll let him say that, I feel it.
Okay.
Go now, yeah, I put stop bars on there to maybe help and then, you know, speed's been an issue there and kind of looking into, they're not speed bumps, they're speed humps that you can take at a. Certain speed, you know, if you put those big speed bumps in there, you get it pretty fast and. Beer off. So they're pretty spindy, but I haven't done a bunch of research, you know, as far as how effective they are.
The. The humps are kind of expensive, yeah.
Yeah, it's actually, it's not just, it's, they're pretty big, I can't remember the exact measure base, but they're like seven, eight feet where you go up and. It goes back down.
They go up seven or eight?
No, seventy feet long. Sorry.
Why? Why?
That really. Sorry.
Place those kind of.
Somewhere on Glen Street, you know, before.
Like, um. My VJs are up there.
I would somewhere in the closer to the middle between the four ways there.
Could could we, could we install them in the season and take them out in winter?
Yep, that'd be handy. And what what did you tell me, how expensive are they?
They're anywhere from six to ten thousand dollars for for each, yeah. And it'd be both like, see, what it is, what's the material? It's rubbery.
Okay, I. And you probably want, if maybe you're really gonna do it. You probably want more than just one on each. Or say one, two or three, I don't know.
Yeah, they make up where it's just one lane or you can make one that goes. You know, across both lanes. How much are the one lane? I can't remember for sure. Look, but I mean, if you want to start, bow and dabble is the worst.
Well, I I I get the. Dan, I get the north bones, put them in there. The south bone even needed?
Yes.
Oh, I think.
Yeah, they fly.
Oh, really?
Once they, once they leave that stop sign, they're. They're doing thirty, thirty miles an hour.
Chatted with Dave Curtis this afternoon and that isn't why I talked to. Chatted with Dave Curtis this afternoon and that is why I talked to him that it came up and. And I guess I hadn't really thought of that, but he said it just like you say, once. They've stopped at the stop sign and they see the twenty mile an hour zone and then they see the interstate. There, oh, they really are on a mission.
Yes.
Well, I would think we might want to research that some more. I, I, I would, I don't know that I'd want to just jump into it and do it unless we kind of. I assume we could find someplace, so maybe there's a, a T or maybe some place in Rapid where they have them installed or maybe.
Yeah, I don't, they don't have them installed anywhere.
They haven't done it in Phoenix.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where.
That's built around about.
Gary? Yeah, something that the county used to do when we changed the sign or or did something like that was just take a. A bar and bolt to the post with an orange flag that kind of stuck out to get something, to get their attention to, to look at the sign. Because it's, it's a problem all over town. They come down the street in front of our house twenty-five mile an hour. And they never look north. They go around that corner and head south. They never look.
Yeah.
It's fun to watch some campers hit that dip right nearby your house.
They broke a manhole yesterday.
Did they?
But what are the campers doing there or?
Well, I know, I'll tell you what is a, they're all. Camper going forty hits one of these speed bumps there, they get their attention too.
Stop and rearrange your camper.
I think we want to put a little thought into it.
Especially the seven-foot high model.
That'll kill them.
I want to see it. Very soon, he wants to set up shop. But no, that's kind of what I looked at, just thinking, you know, because, you know, you put speed bumps, that's gonna. You put a speed bump in front of somebody's house, it's not good. I remember when it was from. Where Randy Walker used to live and you can, you can hear it on Main Street. You can hear when they drove over it, so.
So are they, are they just black or do they make them?
They're blacks, they're black and then they have like uh, orange triangles on it in the direction that you go.
Okay, just something to give somebody a little bit of a notice as to what, what's about to happen because. You know, and I don't know if we put a yellow strip on either side of it, you know, just that way it kind of covers us, you know.
Yeah, but I think, I mean, it's designed, I'm used to seeing them before, like, are they? I mean, it's nothing really crazy unless you're.
Oh, no.
Driving really fast.
Well, I think like in Arizona, I see a lot of people in their pain in the butt, in my opinion, but uh.
They were.
They were, and slower your speed than it is to figure that. So, you know, some real. Narrow streets and residential areas that might get worse, because people, it's maybe five mile an hour, you know, they might be, if you had that going fifteen here.
Yeah, this is definitely something to look at.
And I don't know if somebody else could give us some better advice at the D O P or.
Yeah, but, but they're gonna, they're gonna feel it going over it.
I, I kind of think. That might be the most effective. You know, I, I'm sure somebody uh, must have them someplace and could tell us how effective they are.
Not so live, really, they could make a decision for. Car damages or anything, I don't, I wouldn't imagine that would, there wouldn't be any.
You've got it posted.
Do they work just like the rumble strips?
Oh.
Only being raised rumble strips that have got into the pavement.
Yeah, what it is, is it's just like a rubber pad that goes, you know, the, the speed depend, the angle depends on the speed, you know? And so when you drive, you feel it, so you slow down.
I, I think it'd be, wouldn't make it much noise as a rumble strip, you know, you're just going over.
Probably be inside of itself.
One over one, one hump.
So by screeching. So the humps are speed rated?
Yeah, yeah, the different speeds and different heights.
Linda? So are you only talking about by the four-way stop sign? Because there are times I cross the street on. Uh, South Boulevard in Glen Street and it's real wide there. But one thing I think that's helped is painting those pedestrian stripes on the street, that's helped by Glen Street, at least. A little bit?
A little bit.
But we almost need to back some rumble strips up way just as soon as people get out the interstate practically.
Well, I think before, before we get too carried away, we are, I, I would not be in favor of. Putting them all over town, I think we need to try a few of them and see if they have it.
So Stan and Rick, would you continue to work with Garrett and Curtis on this and explore it and come back with a strong recommendation then?
Yeah, I would, I would just assume as far as something I would.
Right.
I'd like to actually go see in Rapid or talk to D O P and find out. There's gotta be someone Rapid and. Some areas, I can imagine more, isn't it?
There's a. I mean. A salon, a beauty salon that sells supplies and they have them in their parking lot. It's off of Omaha Street.
Oh, yeah. If that's getting worse.
No.
It's over by like Office.
Yes, Office Depot or whatever it is, it's in that little strip.
But this would be, this would be as long as this table. So it's not like.
It's for the two-way. I mean, you're going two-way.
Right, no, but I mean, not this way, it's like seven foot long. Going across, so it's not this wide when you drive over it, it's this wide when you drive over it.
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
But that, no, not in that one. It, those are just little.
Well, that's what this would be.
No, so like if this is, if this is your street. Completely up on top of your street, those ones are like this. Okay, there's one little single bar across, right? This is gonna be. Like eight foot long, so you drive up on this, you hit this, you drive over the top of it where it's flat and then you come off again. So it'll go the length of the whole street side to side, or you can get just one lane, but it'll also be. Eight feet long.
Would, would it make sense to have them at the same spot, the north and south, same place?
No, 'cause they start. Done it down right after they do the four-way stop, so you want it. Around um, almost Dave Curtis's, maybe a little before that. Because by the time they get up by our place, they're. They're forty-five, fifty.
Maybe by the mercantile.
Oh, yeah, 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 I went too far. Yeah, yeah, I forgot that one.
Where would be a good spot for the inland northbound lane?
From the Garrett's house. Oh, my, sure.
Maybe right at the start, just as you get. Even with uh, the office for the hotel there.
Yeah, you know, and you're also gonna have to look at what. I'm sure. Campers turning on, it's gonna tear it up for trucks, you know, I mean, it's gonna, you know, do quite a bit.
Or driveways, yeah. Looking for drivers driveway. Oh, just kind of.
Okay, yeah.
Look, check it out.
Continue to work on that. Hey, was there some more that you worked on then too?
Um, as far as the motorhome, we talked to them and that guy is supposed to be leaving next week. Um, then we also talked about the bushes by the Best Western. Some people have to walk around it into the street and I talked to those guys there and they said they'll trim it up and clean it up, so, and there's nice. Hard pack gravel underneath there, so. If they want to be there.
So then they won't have to walk out in the street, they'll be, they just continue where the sidewalk is and then cross there, okay?
I seen just this morning, somebody trying to get across, come from the campground. Tried to get across to go up Main Street. There was some pretty verbal noise coming because outfit from Minnesota just darn near run over and just didn't hear the doors. Somebody trying to cross the street right there. They're in a hurry to get here and we're in a hurry to get up town.
Okay, so um, any other things that you explored in Forest, Gary?
I don't think so.
Okay. Did, then we think of anything else? You're good to go, okay. Uh, the clinic update, um, there was a dentist from Rapid that did come. And Carolyn and I and Jennifer Meyer hosted him on a Saturday morning. He indicated that for the practice he's involved with, that space might be too small, but they are very concerned about. While losing the dental. Access and so they are thinking about some other options. I also uh, went ahead and advertised in a satisfied ad in the South Dakota dentist. Uh, newsletter, which will be going out in the next day or two, and so we've got it there. And then the executive director was going to also put it out uh, in an email to the Black Hills area. Dentist to see if there's anyone else that would be interested in that space. Okay, and then fireworks for the July is coming, visiting with um, the fire department. It will be July third at the golf. Uh, course again, and Katie has in the process of advertised it, but it.
Yep, I just made the flyer up and it's on, I put it out on Facebook today and then I think um, we've reached out to Carolyn for it, not. For laser.
Okay, and you make posters to put around your different businesses, yes. So it will be July third and uh, the fire department is helping with that. Anything to add to that, Garrett? Okay, so then, um, finance officer report, Carolyn.
Well, first off, I need to apologize because I just realized um, when I was moving some things around, I somehow got the attorney's report of the agenda. So I don't know if you want to go with her first.
Oh, okay. Do you have a report tonight?
Oh, not really, uh. I'm sure you walked up, uh. Brief that we submitted to this thing, and I didn't get any questions from anybody at land. Um, and now follows in on this court. Linda, I worked a little bit with the um. Little ambulance service and. Pretty much it.
Okay, any questions? Alright. Thank you, and Carolyn, back to you then.
Okay, um. So I just wanted to do a little follow-up on the finance officers' training that I attended. Um, so the session with the H R. There was discussion, they always kind of give us reminders on um. Requirements for if you have seasonal and for the overtime requirements, which. We don't qualify for because our seasonal is under the seven month timeframe. And then they always go over the child labor laws, which is always a good refresher. And they review policies and benefits for retirement as the S R, S D R S retirement. So I will be reviewing our policy for that for the hours that um. You have to work in order to qualify yourself for retirement. I just wasn't sure on that since I hadn't worked with our handbook lately, so. And then other information on retirement. And there was some uh, review on consequences for our drug testing policy, so I want to review that as well, so I may be bringing some of this. Back to you at the next meeting, uh, just. So that we comply with what we need to and meal reimbursement policy, so those are the two things that I kind of questioned when they were talking about it. And then in the finance officer session, um. We were explaining that when we have a. Approval of ordinances, it actually requires a roll call hold, which several of us were not doing, so. When we do go through that process and we have an ordinance, you'll see that change that will have a roll call hold. And then again, like I said, the bill list is actually required to be a separate line item and not part of that consent agenda, so that's why I pulled it out this time.
And what's the reasoning on that? So.
It's spending money, so it has to be a separate line item and can't just be in. So always something new you can learn, you pick up, you know, I mean, and. Several of us are like, really? When did that change? But, you know, it's, that's why it's good to go to these trainings, just always. Learn new things or things that maybe were talked about, but you were soaking in the other topics that was discussed and you just didn't soak in. And then um, last week attending my municipal board meeting, um, some of the things on the agenda for that was. So we do have a new director, so he's learning a lot of the. Processes and all that, and there has been quite a bit of turnover in the staff positions at the municipal league as well. Some retirements and just people doing other things, so. Lot of change going on there. Um, he talked about some of the things that will be happening at the legislative summer study topics. And um, trying to get information on the league's position that we will be taking at the twenty twenty-four proposed legislation. Then we got a tour around Yankton as part of that um, meeting, and they really have a lot going on. We had our meeting at the water plant facility, which was amazing. I asked them when I walked through this sidewalk area, you know, to go through. This side looked different than this side and this side did not look very pleasant at all and I'm like. Is that what your water looks like that you're filtering? It was actually chemical, so. Okay, I can see why you need to filter that water. So a lot of things to learn about that. And then they took us by a water park facility that they just finished. Over a four million dollar water park facility, very impressive. But I asked them, I said, so how is it to staff something like that? And they struggled. They have had some retired staff that stepped up and got certified to help them out, so. Was kind of reassuring that it's not just us that are always struggling to build positions and that, so, I mean, because Yankton's fifteen thousand people. And then at this time, I would like to take this time to thank everyone who commented on the Facebook post. And that the big surprise that I had of receiving this nice award. Was totally blown away and um, appreciated though, it's very humbling to have this support that I do get from this community. But I can't go without thanking the town of Wasta, who asked me to be their finance officer twenty-five years ago, that got me started here. That was a big help for me to be able to apply for this position. And I want to thank the council for taking a chance on me sixteen years ago for this position. And how fortunate I feel to be given this opportunity for this great career that I enjoy. So thank you, Mayor and Council.
Okay. With that, then we, did you want to talk about the elected officials workshop?
Oh, I do, yes. So I included that as well, so you see what's on the agenda and um, I will need to know by July eleventh. If you plan, would plan to attend. I can get you registered online for that. And then the bill will come through the July thirteenth meeting, but if you would like to attend, let me know, so I can get you registered.
Okay, Carolyn, then you can. Not attend, but get the information.
Oh, okay.
And I would be interested in that, because if that's a stuff, that would be interesting.
And I would like to attend.
And you're gonna attend.
Okay, anything else?
No, Steve, they'll get, they'll get that, you can, you can check it out.
Say that one.
I think if they attend. They'll get a book, won't they?
Yeah.
It's a six figure, so then you just check out my reason.
Well, I could do that.
If you don't return it, you're gonna charge you.
Okay, and. And, but the state um. Municipal league meeting is gonna be in Rapid City this year, not for the.
Yes, it is.
And so that's maybe something more of us need to get on our radar at that point in time too.
Yeah, 'cause you can pick and choose your times, you know, or sessions that they would be having, that like, you know, you know, going with these stuff, so.
Since it's so close, so, okay, so, anything else? Okay, Garrett, uh, public works reporter.
I don't have much. Our new employee here, Vernon's been with us.
Our new employee here, Vernon's been with us for about a month and he's doing really good and catching on and. Really interested in everything that goes on in town and, and you know, has ideas to make it better and kind of up out with everything, so. He's doing, doing a good job. I don't have anything else.
Okay. Are there any other items for discussion with no actions to be taken? Does anyone have anything they want to bring up this evening? Okay, the next city council meeting will be July 13th. That is the only one we're gonna have in July, is that true, Mr. Anderson?
That is correct.
Yes. And so with that. We've had Ava wanted to be on the agenda for, to talk about the pool. But I will ask if this, would you need to be cognizant if it has something to do with employees or personnel? That we could take it to executive or we should take it to executive session? So what, you, you will have to.
I mean, it's not like anybody specifically, it's kind of just the pool generally. Just like stuff in the handbook.
Okay.
So a few days ago, we ran into a problem with like the pool being closed. And we were supposed to come down to the city and get our three hours of. Well, first of all, we've always had the handbook, we usually just sign it and then move on. Like we don't, I, this is the first summer I've got it and it's my fifth year as a lifeguard, so. I ran across some areas that are in it as well that I would like to get fixed. Such as like the thunder and lightning at seven here. Did everybody get a copy of it? I don't. Well, on the. Part about lightning and closing due to weather, it says we're closed for 15 minutes, but it's actually 30 minutes. And then there's.
So just for clarification, the handbook says 30 or the handbook says 15?
The handbook says 15 and it shouldn't say 30.
Got it.
Yeah, who, who decides?
For the time.
Thunder and lightning, when they're closed.
If we hear it or see it.
Hear it or see it.
Then the light goes close for 30 minutes and then if it lightens or thunders again, we're closed, like we restart the timer.
That's the same way with any outdoor. Sport, you know, it's kind of the same thing. Football?
Yeah.
Okay.
So what page is that on, Ava? Have that one.
Eight. On the implement whether it will see.
Anything else?
Went on page five for the rotation and says the lifeguards rotate every 30 minutes, but we rotate every 15 minutes.
Does that work out better?
Yeah, otherwise, so generally we have. Five lifeguards on duty, but due to short staff this year and especially next month, because we lose one of our lifeguards. We'll usually just have four people on. So it's five people on, we've been having three lifeguards out. So then if you're out there for 30 minutes every rotation, you'll be sitting out there for an hour and a half. Rather than just 45 minutes. And when people are working seven to 11 days in a row, it's extremely exhausting to sit in the sun for an hour and a half at a time. And then get a little break and then you're back out there. So with 15 minutes, it helps because the lifeguards get like. Some of the, like. The middle chair and the five foot end is the most stressful spot. There's kids of all ages, like horse playing around, even though we tell them they're not supposed to and everything. And so it's nice to move to a less stressful area and not have to be there for 30 minutes rather than 15 minutes.
So in the line above that, it also says the manager is responsible for setting a rotation schedule.
Yeah, so we usually would, we all get like after we've set everything up and it's a few minutes before we open. I don't really have a schedule, we just have an order that we go in, so. One person will go on the 10 foot, one person will go on the three foot, one person will go on the four foot. And then the other two are in the shack and we just go out in the same order all day.
What, what are you gonna do when you have four?
Um, we. So when there's over 30 kids in the pool, if it's necessary to have three lifeguards out, we'll have three lifeguards out. But otherwise we'll just have two, so that it's not so exhausting for the lifeguards who are working so much. Say that number again, 30.
So when you, you have 30 kids in the pool, you need three.
Yeah, unless we have five lifeguards working, because it doesn't make any sense to have more people in the shack than that, like 30. And then on page four, under conduct, my first bullet point. It says employees must report 20 minutes prior to the start of their scheduled shift. But it's supposed to be an hour, because we open hours and you get there after.
What's, Ava, what's the purpose of that? I'm just curious.
The thing that takes the most time is vacuuming and cleaning the vacuum.
Sure.
Yeah, so there's, we clean the bathrooms at the park and at the pool. We do the chlorine, we sweep and rinse the deck if it needs rinse, and we clean the guard room. Uh, and then the vacuum, we have to untarp the pool. And so some days we'll get done a little bit earlier, but most of the time we need the full hour, especially to get the vacuum all the way.
What kind of vacuum is it?
Pool vacuum.
Well, I guess that, but it's a Dyson.
Cool Dyson.
Yeah. They made that you put in the deck and it, does it, and has a pull. And you have to manually do it.
It's, it's a, like a filter system, it's like.
What power is it, water?
Yeah, well, electricity and a pump.
Okay.
And then it sucks.
Is that out of the pool?
Yes.
Because we, we have a robot. At our pool.
I have to have a sort of language.
It's, it's really good and it's mesmerizing.
They told us that, but we priced it.
Oh, yeah, they were like, I think we're on our third generation, but they're really effective, they really work well, fun to watch.
Put that on your wish list.
Yeah.
So really. Been on there for about five years.
Really heard about it in the last two, so.
I think those were all like the main, big rules. There's also like, it says no food and drinks, which we do concessions, so there's obviously going to be a drink in the pool area. It's just we keep it out of the pool itself. And then the phone issue, it's, I'm sure everybody who has employees knows that it's. Extremely hard to keep people off their phones. So my main point is just make sure everything is done if something needs to be done. Don't have your phones out with you on the chairs, they always stay in the guard room. But the female lifeguard is, yeah, we're just sitting there, but it's mentally exhausting and stressful, like. So it's nice to be able, once you go in the guard room for your break, to just be able to relax for a little bit. And if you're on your phone, just be courteous to people who do come up to the desk and need your help.
So you, you, you do get breaks, Ava?
Yeah, so. Yeah, if you're in the guard room, you're still doing like concessions and you'll walk through the bathroom like right when you get done. And sometimes there's like, like if a kid needs a Band-Aid, you'll get a Band-Aid or something like that, but most of the time it's a break.
And what's the length of time?
It's still 15, it goes in the 15 minute rotation. So if there's two people in there, you'll get 30 minutes. And if you're just the only one to get the 15 minutes.
So if there's two people in there, this one moves over here, this one goes out, the one that comes out goes here, so they just rotate. Boom.
But. But a person would still only be 15, one person would only be 15.
If there's, so if we, if we have four lifeguards working and there's three lifeguards guarding outside. The person will only have a 15 minute break. But if there's five lifeguards working and three outside and two in the shack, then you go in for 15 minutes. And then another person comes, like there's two people in there at the same time, so you're in there for 30 minutes. But then you're outside for 45 minutes.
And one of the, sorry, I have a question, is your like actual pool break figured into that too? Because you take a pool break with everybody.
Break is 10 minutes, so say the three people who are out there when it's pool break. They're out there for 10 minutes and then they stay in that same chair that they were in for five minutes and then the next person comes out. So they're still outside of the guard room for 15 minutes. There's just monitoring the kids outside of the pool during the break.
So the pool break doesn't have anything to do with your rotation time?
No, not really, it's part of the rotations already implemented into it. But. At like, for today, for example, it was me, Ben Dawson, Nora and Bria. And Nora and Bria had volleyball league tonight, so they had to leave at 3:45 to get their bus at four o'clock. So then it was just me, Ben and Dawson for the last two hours of the day. So if we only had four people working, then two people would have left. And then we would have been stuck with just two people left and it's hard to run the pool, there's only two guards there.
Just because you talk numbers, 30, you need, need three guards out. What's the most people you have in the pool?
Yeah, I don't know if there's a limit, but yesterday we had about 65 at a time.
Whoa, 65 in the pool? Oh, that's intense.
When he was there, when that, when one of those boy scouts come in, there was 120 of them. Craziest thing you've ever seen.
How many boy scouts?
There was like 120 of them.
All in the pool?
Yeah.
Looked like when you pull a middle, like a middle trap, I mean, there was just stuff. It was crazy. You should have told them where the dam was.
Yeah, no kidding.
Pretty good cleaning after that. But no, and I've been up there, you know, quite a bit and I, I, the phones, it's not an issue, you know? Every time I've gone up there, they're not on them, they're. They're put away and.
Good.
I think, I think when we, we went up in Malibu, you kind of, everybody kind of got settled down and we're all, everybody's good, so.
And then another thing that's not necessarily wrong, it's just in my opinion, we definitely tend into a babysitting, free babysitters. It says children that are six years old can be at the pool without an adult, which is like kindergarten.
Is that over?
Yeah.
What page is that on?
Page three, under facility rules. If, and then if they're under six years old, they have to be with someone who's 12 years old.
Three year olds, twelve year olds.
Run that last age thing by.
If someone, if the kid is under six years old, someone who's 12 years old can be their supervisor. Which they're generally swimming, not supervising.
And so the three year olds running around hoping he.
Well, they're usually three years old, well, but like a four or five year old, yeah.
So you have four or five year old kids?
Yeah.
Kind of they're on there all a little bit, or they're supposed to have an older person with them.
Yeah, but they only have to be 12.
So do you have a suggestion?
I would just say increase the age from six to like. Eight even, before they can say they're old, yeah.
Does that make sense?
That makes, eight, that's a good number, yeah.
But how is that gonna change the situation you just described? Even if, if you put eight in there and the 12 year old is there and he's there.
Year old will be more responsible in this, like a six year old could be there by themselves. This would change that, so that the kid has to be eight in order to be there by themselves.
But then I think what Mary's saying is maybe we should change the 12?
Oh, yeah.
Isn't that it?
We could change that too.
That's. So I don't, I'm not sure you're solving your, what you've described to me.
Well, just kind of. Two situations, two issues. But, but.
And the hard part is, is, you know, there's some younger people that babysit.
Yeah, that's where I think the 12, I mean, usually we don't have a problem with the 12. Or older supervisor thing, it's usually this kid, like young kids who are just there by themselves.
The six year old?
Yeah.
Yeah, just don't, don't, don't 12 year olds babysit and stuff.
Yeah. And then our sign at the pool says four feet tall to be there by yourself. Which I don't know if that's a good measurement, because it could be too tight, maybe long. So I don't know if we want to change that too.
Maybe it's old. Height and age.
Height and age.
I mean, would, would it make sense just to not even count it?
Yeah, I mean, we don't have a way to measure how balls and.
So let's say somebody.
It used to be a fine sign.
Let's say that somebody 16 has, you know, a six year old or even a five year old. And they are right at the line or just under it, do you guys keep them in a certain end of the pool?
Yeah, we usually tell them to stay on the three foot.
Okay. Yeah, and they're really good at that, I, I just that, all right.
There's just a couple of kids who don't like to.
Plays off from the pool might help.
Yeah.
You can call me.
Ava, wouldn't you suggest? We implement, mount the new age requirement?
I mean, it'd be hard to implement it now.
Mid season.
They're already going to the pool, so maybe just next summer. Enforcing more. And I mean, the parents are part of the problem, like they just expect us to, they'll drop their kid off when they're at lunch break and then they'll, they'll make it off for them. And so. And we even have like grandparents drop their kids off, where like here's her snack, here's her drink, here's her money, can you watch it while she's swimming? It's like we're not, if your child's not responsible enough to keep track of this stuff, she shouldn't be able to be in the pool by herself.
Is there, is there lockers at the pool?
For us.
We, there used to be, like, when I was a kid, they had little baskets, but that's, that's not a good deal either. Right, because you've got money in there, you know, stuff, stuff happens, you know, and you don't want the liability or the, the problem on them to. Deal with that. Yeah, obviously, you know, take a bag, put it in your bag.
Isn't that, got her something or nothing these kids could. Wear or whatever, you know, like that the parents can get them to do.
And I mean, it's not like we have a problem with kids taking other kids' stuff, as long as they just have a bag to put everything in and send it for shoes.
Yeah.
So be fine, like I've never had a kid come up to me and say something stealing stuff.
But it's just shouldn't be there, I don't think it should be their responsibility to keep track of their sticks and water and money.
No.
What would you say to a age group is if a young child, your parent just drops off their space? I mean, I would talk to five years old, six years old, or that.
Like six, seven, eight. Are the ones that like, I, that we get stuff like that about. Anybody who's like 10 to 12 years old is good about doing stuff like those clothes.
But what is your answer? Are you gonna stand by the gate and say? They can't come in without supervision, is that what you're gonna do?
If we have to.
It's kind of a safety issue, isn't it?
Yeah. I mean, we're there to enforce the safety, but we can't be totally responsible for watching your kid all the time. If we have 30 other kids to watch.
That's what kind of worries me too, is like, you know, you send a six year old kid over there. You know, you can't, you can't tell Ava to not let them go to the park. You know, that's not, that's not Ava's responsibility or any lifeguard to keep them from going anywhere, so they can leave, you know? You know, that's not, that's not Ava's responsibility or any lifeguard to keep them from going anywhere, so they can leave, you know. They can leave and the parents don't know they're gone, you know, their job's to watch them, you know, while they're in the water and making sure they're safe.
Yeah, if you, you know, if you take your high number, you have sixty-five people in the pool and a six year old. Splashes under the deep end and you really, he or she really can't swim, it'd be hard, I mean. That, that situation could go unnoticed for a bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think like Ava said, you know, that middle part of the pool is probably the craziest.
Yeah.
Part where all of them can go, you know, maybe except for the little ones.
So usually where they try to play football and tackle each other and.
So we would really need to do a public awareness to make our, to raise the awareness that parents shouldn't be dropping. Six and seven year old off. That they have to be under supervision before we open the pool next year, is that where you're thinking?
Yep.
Okay, so we need to make note of that.
Okay, maybe do some signage up there and maybe put an ad in there now in the paper that. We are planning on implementing these things for next year. Kind of puts up together, I had review.
Just give the people a message.
Yeah.
Probably work with the school, the school get out and maybe that kids at that age can. And flyer, a lot of parents that wouldn't cover all of them.
We get a lot of them.
And just very much like, we've always been a little confused when there's a storm, like if it's at one o'clock, what's the difference of how we. How long we stay at the pool compared if it's a five o'clock storm? So obviously like if the weather's good, like the other day it was sixty-five degrees and it has to be sixty-eight to open, so we couldn't even open, so we came down here. Got stuff ready for swimming lessons for this week. But like if it storms at two thirty and we've already been there for two and a half hours, the mid, it says in here, that the, we get three hours minimum, okay?
What page is that on?
Eight. It's under the, if the weather policy.
It, it, it has to be sixty-eight degrees for it to open?
Yep. So are, the question the lifeguards had is if we're already at the pool for at least an hour or so, and it says we get paid a minimum of three hours. We don't think that we should have to come to the city office to do work for a couple more hours. Like, before we want any of the extra hours, because most of us. Me, for example, I'm basically filling shifts, like I would love to have more days off. So if it storms and I get to go home early, I'm gonna wanna go home early and not come work more hours that I don't want to have. But if it's, like on, I don't remember, Friday last week, it, we weren't gonna open at all. And so I wanted at least some pay for the day, so we came in and worked for a few hours.
Is that when you did your lesson plans for, so that worked out very well?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you're saying that do you prefer to get an hour pay when you're open and not get the minimum of three and rather like you're saying you'd rather the whole?
From like how we read the handbook, we thought that like if we're already at the pool and have done work for at least an hour. Or so, we would still get the minimum three hour pay, but if we don't open at all and we haven't done anything, we would either come in and do work and get the minimum three hours or. Choose not to come and not get anything.
Okay, so that's maybe where the confusion is at, because I, maybe you guys look at it and see how that reads, because I thought that it was. If you close within, you know, to get the minimum three hours of pay, then you need to come down if we have stuff to do. Whether you're open, closed, right, am I reading that right, Mary?
Well, that's what I was understanding.
Yeah, I, this is the first year that we've kind of been told to come to the city, we've always just, if it storms, we got the three hours and we just went.
Are you on that spot right now, Mary?
I am.
Can I read it? How it reads?
Well, it starts. A staff member is served to remain on duty until dismissed by the manager. If the pool is closed for inclement weather, pool employees shall perform other city work. If it is available to make up for the lost hours, lifeguards will be paid for a minimum of three hours for the day.
So it sounds.
So it sounds like.
Optional. It sounds like, if you wanna make up the pay, come to the city. So what you're saying is if you spend any time at the pool, then you would automatically get the three hour pay. If you want any more pay past that point, you would come work or to choose to, to go. Or if it's bad weather all day, make the choice not to get the three hours pay and stay home and take the day off.
Yeah.
Okay. Was there anything past that, Mary, that?
No, that's the, the, the end of that, um, paragraph.
Is that how it's been in the past, Karen? Cause I remember when there was the conversation about that, because somebody was kind of upset, we had kind of a really wet season. And they wanted some hours, and so we said, well, you know.
Yeah, we took some, yeah, we took some boys and did some work, yeah. It, no, I think it'd just be good to look into it a little more, you know, and.
I haven't been to in the pool for the last three or four years, so.
Do you remember that conversation though?
No.
I remember, I remember when we, because when you said there was a, it was cold. And rainy and, and they weren't getting any hours, and so they were trying to find part-time jobs elsewhere.
Yeah.
Thinking of three hours.
And so we, we guaranteed them three hours a day.
How long have you worked?
This is my fifth year.
Yeah, I think it was, like, yeah, I mean, no, they went, went to Red Forest or Mohegan. Yeah, I think there needs to be a little more detail on, like, if it doesn't open at all, we're gonna give it three hours, you know, you know, so.
It just sounds like if they don't open at all, you don't get the three hours.
Right.
Unless you come in.
Unless it came in and.
But if you, you come in for the hour to set up, and then they decide to go, normally you just get the three hours and go home.
Yeah.
And, and you know, you should get something for showing up and being available.
But there should be a minimum probably on, you know, not just going up and walking through the locker rooms and then heading out and getting your three hours. Yeah, and I think what, I think what she's thinking is, you know, you, you come in at noon, you vacuum, you bathrooms, do everything. And then it starts raining at two o'clock, where you've already done all your work, you've gotten ready to open up and you can't be there because.
So I think this is something we need to discuss a little bit more amongst us and, uh. Uh, then get back and clarify that for the staff.
Yeah.
Would that be okay?
Mm-hmm.
So, okay, is there anything else you wanted to visit about?
Um. I think that was everything.
Was there questions on some of the guards with the handbooks?
The, the three hour thing was most people's problem with the handbook, was they felt like. They signed up to be lifeguards, not to come to the city and do work, so if they were at the pool and it closed. They didn't wanna come do work for the city.
Well, well, okay, and I, I have a question, Ava, we're talking about. How many days do lifeguards work and what's a, what's a shift?
We work from twelve to six thirty, except for like this week, I work eight to six thirty Monday through Friday, because we are swimming.
Do they have a, like a half hour break or?
We have a half hour break from twelve thirty, the one.
But the six thirty includes you guys having to do closes.
Yeah, we close at six and it takes half an hour to get everything closed.
Okay, so they really don't have like a half an hour of lunch break? They just kinda.
On a normal day.
They don't have a clock out break, right, they're getting in six and a half hours, so their breaks are pretty much when they're in their rotation, you know, they can. They can have, they can agree their lunch or whatever. It's, it's, so the, the three hour thing is, is. Kind of been a minimum, if you came in, you set up and it starts raining, then you get the three hours, okay?
So do you think the guards are okay with saying, okay, it's closed, I don't wanna do any extra work, I'm good with going home?
Right now, yeah, because we're open a lot and people are working almost every day, but in July. We're losing, we're saying, we're only gonna have seven lifeguards, three of us are full time and. Four of us are part-time, so there's probably gonna be several days in July where we're closed and people might want the extra hours, so they would love to come in and get some hours in. But as of now, people aren't getting more hours than they necessarily want, so they would rather just take the day off.
Okay, how many days a week do they generally work?
Five or six. Full time is five to six, then part-time can be with them, one to four. Depends on the person.
So how many days in July are you projecting that it'll be closed? Have you looked at?
Uh, for sure, probably the fourteenth, fifteenth and sixteenth, and then possibly the fourth and. I'm trying to get enough for celebration, but nobody ever wants to work during celebration, so. I don't know why, because there's something going on at that time, but.
So couldn't you be like everybody else and say, get your schedule down and say this is when you work?
Yeah.
But they, but they just.
Yeah.
They don't work nowadays.
And these kids all have camps that they're going to.
A lot of kids have to leave early, most like Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday, we have at least one or two kids who we have to leave early. But they have to work because the other people who are lifeguards are out of town, working their other job.
You think you could get your July schedule to us like on the twenty-sixth, so we can kinda look at this and kinda get our head wrapped around this?
Uh, I asked for everybody's schedule yesterday, I've gone one person's. And I'm hoping to have it done on Sunday, because I leave for vacation on Monday. So I can get it to you on Sunday morning.
Perfect, well, to Katie.
Yeah, and if you don't get the response that you need out of your requests, maybe we can ask Katie, uh. Because you're gonna be gone.
Yeah.
And we, if, if there's that much closure dates, we would like to see what we can do about it, try to keep it open.
Cause I know in the past we've asked Philip and the other lifeguards, with the couple, so that would be a, so we are now. I know they have like thirteen lifeguards.
Oof.
Well, that is a good idea.
About the same size, do you know? I think they were more, I think they do like a water rubbers thing.
All right, anything else?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I have one question, were you in the years past, Ava, that you guys, this might have been a little while ago, but you guys were doing something for older kids?
Yeah, teen swim nights.
Are you gonna see if you can?
We're gonna try, but we don't, I don't think we have enough people, we're gonna do once a month or twice a month. We don't even have one scheduled for June, so.
Okay.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Ava.
Okay, at this point, um. The next agenda, agenda item is executive session.
Do we need it?
We do.
We do?
Yes, we do, yes.
I make a motion, we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing legal personnel issues according to S D C L one dash twenty-five dash two.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Oh yeah.
All right. Okay, I will call us out of executive session, and, uh, the next item on the agenda is to approve a hire. Would I have a motion, uh, to, all right, to that effect?
I was so moved. That's it, I'll make a motion that we hire Kendall Nelson at an hourly rate of twenty-four fifty.
Twenty-four fifty?
So we have to say it's starting.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
And then the, the position, executive director of the wall.
Of all Economic Development Corporation.
Okay.
Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Jerry has seconded, it's been moved and seconded, any other, uh, comments or concerns?
Nope.
All right, uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, our next meeting is on July thirteenth, there is any other? No, meaning is adjourned.
I think even if there was something, nobody would say it.